Meeting to order. Rob, please take the roll call.
All right, I will. Ms. Bacora. Mr. Gooddally. Mr. Cohen.
Present.
Mr. Conyer.
Here.
Mr. McCarthy.
Here.
Ms. Lanzetta.
Here.
Mr. Cal, Ms. Gatto.
Here.
Mr. Bogus.
Here.
Mr. Wilkin.
Here.
Mr. Baden.
Here.
Mr. Brown. I know you're here. Mr. Lavadis, excuse. Mr. Watkins. Mr. Armquist.
Here.
Mr. Markowitz. I see you. Uh, Mr. Rudikoff. Say, Mr. Travers. Or Ms. Weiner. Uh, Mr. Murray, just so you log in. Mr. McLaughlin.
Here.
And this, nobody from Kingston is vacant. And Mr. Guy, we already is excused. We have a call.
All right, um, so everyone had a chance to, uh, read the minutes?
I'm making a bunch to approve, Mike Baden.
Was in favor? Well, excuse me. Those opposed? Okay, the amended minutes has suggested by Mr. Bogus, uh, with those changes and approved. Move on. Education and training opportunities. Anybody get a chance to read the housing action plan?
Um, I've looked at it in terms of specifically for the town of Rochester, I am. But I've skimmed the remaining and, uh, it's, uh, very eye-opening. Uh, although I did have a conversation with the county executive's office about it and, some of the very specific numbers that are referenced in some of the communities based on the 2018 census numbers, which is a small representation that is then sort of a small percent sample set is the word I should use is taken. Has some really, uh, questionable data when it's, when they try to make it be for that popular, that smaller population size. Some of the data for Rochester and I noticed one, a couple in Marble Town that just the percentage changes from ten, 2010 to 18 seemed not very probable or likely and the county executive's office admitted and Dennis and Rob, you can probably talk more about what, how the 18 numbers were calculated, but I question some of that data in terms of real numbers, but the, the trends definitely are easy to see.
If I can, um, so understand something that, um, and this is going to be true as, as we move forward because the 2020 census is not going to have, um, if you, you think about the questions you answered or no, there were no set of questions relative to the, uh, to, to some of the, the things that are, are in the housing action, some of the demographics are in the housing action report. So the housing action report is based on something called the American Community Survey. Uh, and it, it's not actually 2019, it's usually, it's a five-year average, so that it's, 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 the latest, the last year is 2018, which is why they use, they say 2018, but the smaller, this, i- it is a small sample size, but it is a statistically valid sample. That's the first thing. But as you move down to lower, uh, to smaller and smaller geographies, then what they call the imputation errors, um, they, they tend to escalate. Um, so they work well as a countywide level. They work well at a city level. As you move down to some of the smaller towns, the sample error is, uh, is probably as, as big as, uh, the number that's shown. So, uh, and we, we were aware of that when we put it out, but it's the best data we have available. And it does indicate trends. Uh, there is a, there is a trending here, uh, for that and and the bad, the data is big enough that when you have the conversation about renters uh, and owners and, and, and income and, and, um, and the amount that they're, they're burdened, that, that's a, that's a valid, that's a valid discussion. It's when you start looking at other types of data that's in the report that it becomes much more apparent that, uh, the sample size was small. But I think Mike is correct to say it, it, it's, it's an order of magnitude kind of discussion that you, that you think about and when basically more than 40% of your population is, is, uh, cost burdened, uh, for, for on a rental side, it's, it's, uh, it's pretty telling on a countywide basis. And then in some instances, uh, when you look at this, some communities have over 50% of their rental, of their rental, uh, households are, are, are burdened with over 30% of them or close to 30% of them being severely burdened. Severely burden means essentially more than 50% of your income is going to housing. But why, why I put this on the agenda, uh, was I was thinking that we're, we're doing presentations to town boards. But I was thinking about using, uh, doing the housing action plan uh, as a training seminar for local planning boards, particularly as it relates to the section on uh, community initiatives that could be used. We, there, within that housing action plan, there's something called a housing smart community. Um, and there's initiatives within that, and that's what I'd like to focus on. That, that presentation right there and work on that and offer that in May, uh, the end of May or early June as a, as a, uh, educational training seminar for, for local planning boards, and I wanted the board's feedback on that.
I think that would be an excellent idea.
Yeah. Dennis, you may want to expand the, uh, the audience a little bit and make sure local town boards.
Yeah, we'll invite everybody as we always do, but, but, um, you know, that the, the main thing I, is we wanted to focus on, focus on making sure that the planning board has understood what their role is here relative to housing and it's not what we're trying to, what we're trying to do is convince local town boards and local planning boards that they have a role. That it's not just project review, that they, they actually can do other, other things relative to that. Especially with respect to advocacy as it relates to zoning changes. So that's one of the things we want to talk about, um, and also in terms of streamlining the, the development procedures. I'll just leave it at that. I think it's an important conversation to have and, and, uh, uh, and that's why I wanted to offer it. So if there's no objections, then what we'll try to do is we'll plan on a a training seminar probably at the end of, end of, uh, May or early June.
I, I just want to, uh, say it might complement, um, the program that Pace is putting on too on May 11th and 12th. It might be good to encourage people to attend that as well and follow up.
Why don't you, why don't you explain that Cindy, that, that program?
Um, I don't have it, have it handy, but, uh, I, for some reason I was thinking, uh, your office sent it out.
Mary Ann shared it. It's, it's a two-day session that Pace is putting on, um. It is a $20 a day session, but considering it's, uh, I think four or five hours each day, it's a sizable amount of presentations. It's probably well worth it. Um, I, I've signed up for it and, and, uh, I think I've, I've dealt with some of the pace presentations and they are very detailed, very thorough and, and very informative and, uh, so it's a pretty reasonable cost and for, for the amount of information you're going to get out of it. I don't have the classes in front of me, but I can, if you want Dennis, I can, uh, Mary Ann sent the link to want, to sign up, but I, I think I have further information of what I could send as, as the classes that they're giving.
Yeah, absolutely. And why don't you send it to us and we'll, we'll send it out again. Send it to Mary Ann and myself and we'll get it out again. If they're, if they're going to do, I mean, if they're going to do one in May, maybe we'll move this to sort of middle of June. I don't want to come right on their heels with a, with another one unless, unless the board's on, if, if the board's comfortable, I'm okay.
It might be timely and, you know, doing it the last week in May, because there's the 11th and 12th, and that's a couple of weeks in between.
Okay.
Or the beginning of May.
No, that's too soon, um, Glenn, uh, to get this out and, and to set up the work, I, I I wouldn't want to do it, um. There, there, there's an enormous press of business going on right now with respect to the money that's coming out of the feds.
Yeah.
Um, and so I think a lot of the communities are focused on that, but I, I hear what you're saying and I'll take a quick look up. We'll look for a date. I, I want to have, I really want to have, um, I, I want to invite the consultants to do this, um, rather than, rather than, um, what we've been doing. We've been doing it internally with Evelyn and myself. But I think I want to have the consultants do it, um, if I can get them.
And the pace program is, uh, two, um, two day. daytime programs, whereas I'm assuming your program would be in the evening.
Yep, yep.
Dennis, in terms of education, could, could you give it, and I, my apologies, I don't know how many people got to attend the one you did on agriculture. I, I had a conflicting town board meeting that night, but how did, how did that go?
Um, well, I, I can and I can't. I, I had to leave because I had another meeting. But I, but, uh, I could tell you that the time that I was there, the presenter by the name, gentleman by the name of Jeff Kehoe made an excellent representation, um, of his, of his department in terms of, in terms of his, his, his present, his, 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 his ability to, to to ba- basically make very detailed comments understandable. Uh, and he was also very calm about his presentation and I was, I was impressed. I, I thought he did a very nice presentation. I didn't stay for the whole thing because of another conflict. If there's anybody else that wants to talk about it, that's fine.
Uh, just let me interrupt one sec. Uh, it's the, the, uh, PowerPoint still on the web, but actually I think I never took that into registration, so you could still actually register for it and take it for credit if you wanted to right now.
We had about 30 people attend. Nice. Thanks, Bert.
Yeah, I, I, I just want to thank you, uh, Dennis and Bert and Rob for putting that all together. Um, I was disappointed that more people from Marlboro didn't attend, but, uh, I found it very interesting and especially their list of, uh, resources, um, you know, to follow up on was, was very helpful and, and I really appreciate you guys doing that.
Dennis, I would say that it was, uh, very good, uh. I wish the local, our, the local board here could have got to it because I got a lot of questions, but they don't understand agriculture, but don't tell them that. But, uh, he did lay it out pretty good and it's like Cindy said, the links that were in the presentation are more valuable than anything else because that gives you the place to go to find the answers. And that's a very good resource to use.
I thought he, I thought he, he, he also clarified the idea of what agritourism was versus what it isn't. And I thought that was very helpful to hear. Um, I'm, I, I, I just, we, we talked prior to the presentation. I'm assuming he, he said what he was, what he was going to say. But that, I thought that was, uh, that was a wonderful thing to have a focus on a little bit because there's a, there's a lot of confusion about that. Um, and I think that confusion is, is, you know, I, I think it, it, it was, it was helpful to get that clear, cleaned up.
Dennis or Rob, are those presentations like that, since we're in Zoom, are they being recorded?
That one was recorded. Like I said, you can go on the website right now.
Oh, so the, so the link is to, not just to.
Yeah, I, you can still, I haven't taken it down, so you could actually go to our website, register for it and take it for credit right now.
Okay.
We'll not turn this meeting down.
No, understood. Thank you.
Thank you. And, uh, community reports. Anybody have anything you would like to share?
Uh, McLaughlin here. So I've mentioned this to Dennis, uh, you probably know exactly what I'm talking about. I mentioned it about 15 times in the past year regarding the railroad tracks in the village. And the one in Mount Marion. It's gotten to a point now, and I hate to say it in public, but I'm going to say it. They're, they're too dangerous at this point now in Mount Marion to even remotely go across those railroad tracks. There, the ties are com- coming up right off the road there and hitting cars and somebody's gonna, you get seriously hurt. Or somebody's vehicle is going to get seriously damaged and the DOT did some work last year, the one in the village, uh, by the auto zone there. And that held off for a little bit, but now they're same situation again. So I don't know who could say what to who, but it's getting to be frustrating. And mind you, the town of Stories has lost a police cruiser as a direct result from the Mount Marion railroad traps. I, I'm getting call after call after call over it. It's frustrating.
Well, the call should be made to, to CSX and, and, and federal, and the federal regulatory, uh, the FRA, Federal Railroad Administration. We've made those calls. Just so you know, Vince, we've made those calls. Uh, we're more than willing to make them again, but that's, that's the responsible party.
But the, the other responsible, and I hate to say this, but the other responsible party was the situation when they redid the, uh, the PVI Hill Bridge there, the sour bridge there at the end of the Glasgow Turnpike by 9W, they repaved the whole road from the bridge all the way up to, uh, King's Highway almost. And when they did that, it caused a, almost like a sandwich effect against those railroad tracks. And that was counting DPW who did that. So I'm just putting everyone on notice here.
I will say it again, railroad crossings are the responsibility of the railroad. And the inspection of those crossings and ensuring that they're, they're safe are the responsibility of NISDOT in terms of their inspection processes. And the, and the federal energy and the federal regulatory, that the federal railroad aid, uh, uh, FRA, the Federal Railroad Administration.
We've called everybody and.
I, I'm not, I don't, I don't want to get into this, but I can tell you that's, that's where the responsibility lies. We've had that conversation as well.
If you could do anything to help us out, we appreciate it. Because like I said, we lost a police cruiser because of it.
Anyone else?
Yeah, this is Watkins, town of Shongum, um. Dennis, why would the town, why would the county entertain giving a pilot program to a solar field? There's no benefit to the town, this, other than, other than, um, you know, a couple of jobs, why they're putting up the solar array. And there's, there's, there's no benefit to the town whatsoever after that.
So the, 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 the taxation of solar is, is a bit complicated. Um, you can either opt in or opt out of the pilot program. And if you opt out of the pilot program, then all solar facilities are taxable at their full market value. And their full market value, value tax includes those that are on residential facilities or serving businesses, et cetera, et cetera. Um, the other option is to opt out of that tax and move to the pilots. And pilots, the recommended pilots are come, the recommended amounts come from, um, NYSERTA. And they're based on the number, uh, they're based on the number of, um, megawatts. And they typically, uh, that you don't have to follow them, but you're encouraged to follow them. And all the taxing jurisdictions get notification if you've opted out, get notification of a build. And then you begin the process of negotiating a pilot with the, uh, with the, uh, with the solar operator. And, um, the county and the county notifies school districts when this happens. The county's pilots range anywhere from, I think, three to $6,000 a ma- a, a megawatt or something of that nature. Don't quote me on that. But other communities, I think the town of Awarthing has opted in so that the town of Awarthing essentially is, um, taxing them at full value. Um, uh, as that was the, my latest understanding.
I think, yeah, Dennis, you said it actually backwards. It's.
Right, you're correct.
You, you're automatically opted out of it unless the town did a local law.
Yep.
Back when it first came out. But each agency is a separate jurisdiction.
Yep.
So if the county is negotiating a pilot for a project in a town that has, does not have it, the town is still going to get their full tax dollars for it. The, the county is negotiating a pilot, doesn't change the town.
That's correct.
Um, the other thing I discovered recently is fire districts are not exempt. So the full value of a solar project has to be, uh, in terms of fire taxes has to be calculated because, uh, the two that are on town property in the town of Rochester are, are because they're on town property, we did not do pilots with anybody. Uh, you know, the town didn't, I don't think the county or the, uh, the school district did, however, the, we still had to do their taxable value for fire district valuation.
So the, the other thing that you need to understand with respect, thanks, Mike. The other thing that you need to understand with respect to, to, uh, pilots is that, um, the New York State NYSERTA has changed the way that they treat projects under what they call the New York SUN program. It's, it's a, it's a public subsidy program for large solar projects. Uh, and part of that change has been because of the change in the rules with respect to ag and markets in terms of how they treat solar on farmlands. Ag and markets used to have a policy with respect to solar on farmlands to avoid solar on farmlands with capability, with soil capability classes greater than four. Now what they do, they've done is they've said that they, they have certain kinds of things that they wanted to have, which is, which is demolition uh, and return, uh, return to ag when, when the, when the project's over. So there's, there's tear down or demolition, uh, requirements.
Decommissioning requirement.
Thank you. The decommissioning requirement. Thank you. The, the, the other thing that's happened is NYSERTA recognizing this has now established a mitigation fund. So for projects on, in, on prime farmland that are in ag districts, NYSERTA actually gets money for a mitigation fund. Now, why you would give money to NYSERTA for a mitigation fund for agriculture is beyond me, but that's what, that's what is happening. So one of the things that we're exploring at the county level and what we're seeing at, in a, in the western part of the state and, and generally up in the, in the major ag areas in the state along the Mohawk Valley is a move to essentially establish pilots based on this. So that what ends up happening is, is your pilot payments are going to be higher if you essentially are in an ag district with prime soils. And so we're exploring that at the county level as well to basically start to think about, it's not one fee. It's effectively a fee that it is, is dependent upon some of the soil types that you're on with the idea that if you're going to disturb prime soils that are in agricultural districts, you're going to pay a higher pilot. We're going to establish our own mitigation fund. And there's nothing, it, there's nothing in the law that, that says you can't do that.
How does a pilot benefit the county and the town is what I'm trying to say.
Well.
It's not creating, it's not creating jobs.
The argument is, is, the argument is, is, is many of these towns and certainly the county are climate smart communities. So as a climate smart community, you're supposed to foster and encourage these types of things, not discourage them. And that's, that's why the, that's why they're, and they're following a state, they're following a state guideline in terms of the amount of pilots.
Okay, w- without the pilot too Dennis, the county would get nothing because I'm guessing the county did not opt, uh, did not vote to, to, uh, opt in or opt out of the, the, the no tax zone. So depending on how you say it, but I believe the county did not do that. So, uh, under the, under the the state law, there, they don't have to pay taxes for the first 15 years on those on the improvements of those parcels. They still have to pay the taxes on the, the value of the property, but the, it's the improvement. But in, in, in Sean Gum's case, Mark, I think you guys passed, you guys did didn't follow it. So you, you would still get the taxes.
Correct, but, but again, we're still, we have a, a project that's coming in front of us and it's working with the IDA on a pilot.
Yeah, they could go.
I just don't understand it and that's.
Yeah, if they can go to the IDA, if they, if they, if they, if they have to. Yeah, there's, there's a way around the town op. Yeah, a- and you can, you can I don't believe that the UTEP for the IDA has a solar, uh, has, so it'd be a deviated pilot. I don't believe that there's, I mean, I have to think about that or look at it, but I don't believe that the UTEP has, which is unified tax exemption policy.
I don't want to take up the time on that, but I, I will contact you because I have talked to John Vock and he asked me to, to see what I could do. So I'm, I'm going to make phone calls.
Mark, I can talk to you offline too about what you guys can use to fight that. So.
I appreciate it. Thank you, Mike.
Yep.
All right. Thank you, everybody.
Anyone else?
I have a question, uh, not necessarily a community report, but with the passage of the cannabis law. Is there a plan being put into place to accommodate dispensaries, grow facilities? Uh, analysis of, of the product, anything in the works being talked about?
At the county level, I'm not aware of it, but, but they would probably not be in front of the local plan, coming to the planning department. It may run through the health department. Uh, but it's controlled at the local level. It's a zoning issue at the local level. And there's a community benefit fund that gets set up with respect to that. And then, then there's a tax, I think there's a 4% tax that, that, that ends up as a 1% tax back to the community and then the county distributes it, it distributes it to all the other, other municipalities. We do have a major facility being proposed in, in terms of, uh, a growth facility being proposed in a town of, in a town of, in the town of Awarthing, um, Village of Ellenville. There's a company looking at the former trade site and proposing to build a 500, a 500,000 square foot building. Um, and that's going through the, that's going through the, um, the, the economic development office at the county level and in discussions at the municipal level right now. And I presume that that facility will include a dispensary, but I'm not sure.
So you, you, it's going to be a department of health, uh, leading the, leading the charge here, I suppose.
Uh, well, let's just, let me, let me just say that I, I'll say it again, Bill, is, is, it's controlled at the local level. So is there, if, I, I don't know whether there's quote a plan, if that's what you're asking, but it is controlled at the local level relative to what, relative to where dispensaries are.
Right.
You know, and there are, so there are, there are currently dispensaries for medical marijuana in the county already. There's one on Route 28.
Right.
That was a local decision.
All right, that, that, thanks, Dennis.
Yep.
Anything else? All right. Planning board reports, uh, I don't have anything, um, to report to. And I don't think there are any committee reports either at this time. So Dennis, uh, do you want to do the financial report?
Um, simply to say that we're still in pretty decent shape. The, the county did receive, I don't know whether, everybody should be aware by now that the, the, uh, the COVID relief bill that came out provided a sub- a substantial amount of funding, uh, to, uh, local, state and local governments. Uh, the county is anticipating to receive about $34 million in two installments, well, this year about seven, 17 million each. Um, and then if you, you can go online and figure out what each of the municipalities are going to receive, but they range from, I think Kingston's, Kingston's somewhere around 700,000, I mean, 17 million. Whereas, uh, as the population decreases, it gets down in the, in the 200 to 300,000 range. Um, but, um, there's, there's some guidelines out on that right now, but we haven't seen detailed guidelines yet. Uh, those guidelines are, they're basically economic development, uh, related to COVID. The other, other recovery plan. So, and then lost revenues from, um, from expenses that you are not anticipating you're going to receive reimbursements from, from FEMA. Um, and lost revenues could be lost sales tax revenues. Uh, they could be other licensing revenues. They could be, um, I think you could even argue that it could be, uh, ticket revenues if you're, if you have a police force and, and you're, and your courts were quiet. Um, there's, so there's a quite a bit of, of flexibility wi- with respect to those funds. Um, I suspect that we're going to see a, uh, we'll see an, an accounting process set up for them. Um, and the county is already, well, not already, we, we were on this when, when the, when the bill was going through the approval process at the federal level. We're all. We're already in the process of looking at, uh, things that we can do with respect to the funding that's coming in. Um, but we do have a substantial amount of lost revenue. Uh, and the other thing is to make your community more resilient for the next, uh, for the next pandemic or for the, for the next, uh, disaster. So there's, that discussion is ongoing. Uh, but you'll see, I think you'll see at the county level, uh, some efforts being made with respect to, um, uh, opioid addiction. Um, and then once we get past that, uh, we've got a substantial amount of hole in budgets because of things that we don't anticipate that we're going to get reimbursed for. Uh, and then there's other things that you can think about with respect to changing, uh, access points to, to buildings, um, making sure DMV works. Uh, you can think of other things that may be on, that may be on the agenda um, right now, and also housing, uh, may be on the agenda as well.
Dennis, do you anticipate on a countywide level that broadband will be in the discussion? Or is that going to be left to the municipalities to deal with?
I think broadband is in the discussion. I don't think the broadband is in the discussion. Let me, let me see if I can, I think broadband's in the discussion, but I don't think it's in the discussion to the level that everybody thinks it's in there because there's so much other funding for broadband. I mean, there, there's, there's special money coming to the state for broadband. There's other, there's other, the infrastructure bill that they're talking about has broadband in it. So I'm not sure that you're going to see a, a huge push for broadband with this money. But I think that there's a huge push for broadband coming.
Okay.
I would, I would also say that the discussion of broadband in, in Ulster County, every, every time we have a discussion of broadband, it, it, in, in Ulster County, the, the, the short thing that comes up is, is that there is huge swaths of the county that are underserved or not served. And quite frankly, that's just not the case. It's, it's just not, it's not the case. Um, and to get to those last miles is, is a, is a real difficulty. That said, I think there's some equitable, equitable challenges with respect to broadband in terms of costs. Uh, if you recall the budget that the governor originally announced, and some of the budget, uh, things that he was announcing was equitable broadband where he was looking at making every provider provide a special broadband, high-speed broadband connection at a, at a low and moderate income price. Um, and that got pulled from the budget, but there's still that, that equitable distribution of broadband or cost and choice was what I call it with respect to broadband because in Ulster County, you really have only one provider and that's it.
Well, that's, that's why I bring it up is it's those last miles that are the real challenges. Because those last miles, you sometimes only have five or six homes and they're getting back prices of fifty, sixty, seventy thousand dollars to service one or two homes and you know, I quite frankly, don't have a lot of confidence on the state level that the money that's earmarked specifically for broadband is going to make its way down to solving those problems. And on a local level.
Well, call Elon, you know, he's got those satellites up there now.
And, and
They supposedly work very well.
Yeah, well, Worsing is moving that direction and, and that's why I was asking the question. I think if the county got involved in something another way, or at the very least, if the county can help us lobby the state to make sure that the rural areas are addressed because in, in the major rural communities, I'm thinking the, uh, Hardenburg, Shandaken, Rochester, uh, the place where you don't have a high density of homes, we've got some significant issues.
So, um, I'm going to push back a little bit, Mike. Um, the, we have issues. I don't know whether they're significant. Um, there, when you have ninety-eight percent of the county has broadband access, there are, there are areas where you don't have broadband access. We are looking at and have looked at what we call point-to-point uh, broadband access, which is our ability to essentially, I don't want to get too far down the weeds, but essentially you can, you can beam broadband from tower to tower as, as far as sixty miles under line of sight. But in order to convert it from, uh, uh, from point, from point to multipoint, which is essentially getting down to a, an antenna that's mounted on somebody's house, it's limited to about four miles, three and a half to four miles.
Right.
And unfortunately, we've done, we've looked at this, unfortunately, where our towers are located right now, it's very difficult to make the towers work for that last mile. Um, but I think, I think the technology is changing rapidly enough that you're not going to see wires anymore. You're going to see wireless broadband.
Right.
Um, I have a question for Dennis about, um, Dennis, the thirty-four million that you were mentioning that's coming from the American Recovery Plan Act?
Yep.
So how does that number, the thirty-four million actually rank up with how much the county has either had in extraordinary expenditures or lost revenues? Is that thirty-four million? Pardon?
You need to ask the budget office that. I'm not privy to those.
You don't have any sense?
I'm not privy to those numbers now. Well, I, I mean, you look at the estimates, the estimate of loss of sales tax alone was ten million dollars.
Right. To the county.
To the county. That was an estimate. I don't know what it actually was, but that was the estimate.
Yeah, I don't think it, I don't think that materialized very well.
I don't think so either.
Yeah, because, uh, like I can tell you, we got most of what we had budgeted on the town level. By the end of the year, we were down, but it came, went back up and we got all except for about three or four percent, I think of what we budgeted, so.
But I, I, I think it's, I think it's safe to assume about ten million of, 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 of costs that we had. I mean, that would be my, what they call wild, wild guess, you know?
Thank you. Oh, by the way, Rob, I'm here. I was a little late.
Yeah, I got, I got you.
Yeah, I got you as well.
Anything, anything else on, well, finance, you've already taken care of, environmental notice?
Uh, they're out there. I, I have nothing to, to discuss.
Do it. Okay.
And communication is the same way.
Any special reports?
Um, Rob, you want to mention where we are on, um, reapportionment?
Sure, I can do that. So reapportionment committee is meeting the second Wednesday of every month. Uh, last, went, this earlier this month, we had a presentation from the same provider that we did for the last two, twenty-ten census for reapportionment. It's a Citygate GIS. And they gave a good presentation. The prices for software are way up. We, but we had, last time we had a budget of fifty thousand dollars for the commission and we spent a total of nine, but really only needed a fraction of that because there weren't that many tech savvy people on the committee. This time around, if we wanted that many licenses, the same amount of license, it would cost about thirty-five thousand dollars. And we don't have a budget at all given to the reapportionment committee. So any recommendations for software that we will be making to the commission? Um, we'll have to be asking for making the request, the, the commission will have to be making a request to legislature for funding for any software they choose. I'm going to be looking at, uh, another software for them called, um, it's by Caliper Corporation. Same people do our, uh, traffic modeling software called Calip, that's Caliper. So they make something called Mapitude and that might be a lot cheaper. So I'm going to get some quotes from them. But that's where we are with that. Um, right now, the, we're, we have time to select a program because the earliest possible date we will get them is sometime late September. So is the numbers. So we have a lot of time to, uh, put together for a license and then start the process. The problem is, is that the commission has to have its first public hearing May twenty-second of twenty-twenty-two, according to the charter. And I believe has to have it all wrapped up by July of that twenty-twenty-two as well. So it'll be a shorter timeframe, but it'll be longer, much longer still than last time, which we only had about two months to do the whole thing. And that's where I, I know Mike is, looks like he wants to say something, but he was at the meeting as well.
No, I was just the, uh, it's too bad that there was not money budgeted for the software because that program you guys used last year and I, I watched the presentation there of the new, the, the updated version of it and it's really, really good and very user friendly. So.
Right. The problem with that online functioning or the commenting tool, that is part of a seventy-eight hundred dollars a month package. So we will probably not be recommending they use that.
It may have a gold.
When your software is only really used every ten years, you, uh, you have to make the price high, I guess.
Yeah, well, this is what GIA software costs. I know Esri who makes Art Map, which is the main software using Map Office for mapping. The one seat for them costs about forty-five hundred dollars. I haven't gotten any cost of that. Caliper, I might come under a thousand a seat, so we'll look into that a little.
Thanks, Rob. So Bert, could you give us an update on, on ag districts? I know ag, ag one and the ag update and the ag additions?
Um, agricultural district one, I guess the resolution is before the legislature. And, um, it's, it's, um, I don't remember offhand. It's about forty or fifty acres. They'll be removed from the district. And, uh, one forty acre parcel stay in the district. Uh, we reached out to the gentleman who owns the, the parcel. Um, I guess the, the neat thing about ag district one is, uh, Chris Kelder, a farmer on the Farmland Protection Board, asked us to do a more sophisticated analysis of like cropland changes. And so, uh, I ended up learning about remote sensing. And in the area that makes up southeast Ulster County, there was over a thousand, around eleven hundred acres of additional cropland from twenty thirteen to twenty nineteen. Which is pretty interesting. And there were more parcels, around eight more parcels that, um, received an agricultural tax assessment, mostly orchard and stone fruit, uh, parcels. So it was, um, it was, it was an interesting experience. And, um, it's, um, and it's gonna, we still have some more work to do, uh, uh, about another month or two, two months worth of work on that. Uh, as for ag district inclusions this year, the, um, we have six applications for five properties over the northern part of Ulster County, two in Asopis, one in New Paltz, one in Olive, one in Shandaken. Uh, I can talk more about the operations when I, when we finish the, um, the site visits. Uh, they're all scheduled. Uh, Cornell did that for us, scheduled the site visits, but, um, but I will say that what's interesting is that what's in Asopis, we have, um, a property that's coming in. It's, it's within walking distance of a property that came in last year, the rice farmers. And in that same general area, there was another property or two properties that came in twenty-eleven. And I know at least one of them is a hang operation that's receiving the ag tax assessment. And in Watson Hollow Road and Olive, we have, um, another parcel coming in. They're renting from Emile's Agro Forest, which came in in twenty-seventeen. In twenty-eighteen, right next door was Atticus Farm. Next to Atticus Farm, on the other side is this parcel that's going to rent to Emile's Agro Forest. So we're seeing these little clusters come in and what was regarded as marginal land and it's a positive sign.
Bert, a quick question on that. In, in, uh, when you're looking at the marginalized land and, and these sort of new projects, is it considered the sustainability of them? Cause we have a prime example in Rochester, property that got added in the ag district two or three years ago for, uh, duck farming that has gone defunct already. And now the property is in the ag district, but it's, it's not really user friendly for agriculture. And it's kind of hindering, uh, potentially another project on, on that site. So.
We, we can't predict the future.
No, I understand that.
Belly up. Um,
Yeah.
I'd be interesting to know how it's, it's hindering, um, because you can develop on a, you know, you can develop.
Yeah, we could, we could talk offline more. It's, it's, it's public perception pretty much, but.
What I will say is in, uh, in Olive, Atticus Farm sells pork products to Brett alone. And, uh, Kyle Jaster and Alex, who is Atticus Farming, and Alex Cologne, his brother, they're very sophisticated business people. And, uh, I would argue that the, the farmers in Asopis, I mean, they had a setback this year, but they really go for very hyper specialized markets. Whether it's, you know, targeting high-end, um, outlets like Brett Alone and with the, uh, rice farmers, they type, the West African restaurants in the Bronx and Brooklyn.
Right.
Um, so yeah, there is, it, I, I think it can be sustainable. The people are working towards it. It's
Okay.
very much an imperfect science though.
Thanks, Bert. Jar?
All right, um, public comment. We have people out in the audience.
All right, I see, uh, hands been raised all.
Okay, it's time for.
Hey, Mr. Shine Wind, I hope I didn't just butcher your name. It looks like you can, uh, talk now if you're on mute.
Great. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. Thanks. Thanks, everyone. Good evening. Uh, my name is Daniel Stephen and I'm a resident of the town of New Paltz. Uh, my comment tonight concerns the referral you've received from the town of New Paltz Zoning Board of Appeals regarding three area variances sought by Trans Hudson Management Corp. For the corner of Route two ninety-nine and North Put Corners Road. The applicant is seeking relief from two provisions in the, of the New Paltz Town Code. First, permission to build a drive-through fast food restaurant. And second, an exemption from the requirement that all buildings have two stories. So just really briefly, three important factors warrant your attention in reviewing this referral. First is traffic impact. The most recent traffic impact study for this project showed how the previous version of this project, which it's worth noting, contained a pharmacy drive-through, but not a restaurant drive-through, would have significantly degraded traffic flow at the Route two ninety-nine, Put Corners Road intersection. According to the traffic impact study, um, that, the one I just referred to, westbound rush hour wait times at the intersection would go from thirty-three seconds in twenty-nineteen, which is when the TIS was done, uh, to forty-eight seconds in twenty-twenty-one under a no build scenario and then seventy-one seconds uh, upon full buildout. So that's thirty-three to forty-eight to seventy-one, uh, westbound coming on two ninety-nine. On weekends, same thing, westbound would go from twenty-five seconds in twenty-nineteen, thirty-six seconds in twenty-twenty-one under no build and, uh, sixty-three seconds in twenty-twenty-one with full buildout. So that's twenty-five to thirty-six to sixty-three. So it's more than double. And that was without the restaurant drive-through. Um, so a restaurant drive-through would significantly add significant traffic volume to and through the site, far beyond the, the no longer proposed pharmacy drive-through. Um, especially at those peak rush hour times, which are also meal times. Uh, were the traffic study to be redone today, not only with the background, you know, you all know this, but the background levels of traffic would be much greater. Um, but the restaurant drive-through would almost certainly bring about average westbound wait times well beyond those projected for the old, old project, which were, as I said, were already double. So permitting a drive-through restaurant at this critical location would make an already bad problem substantially worse. And so then I, uh, I think the applicant should be encouraged to minimize traffic impacts, not exacerbate them. Um, really quickly moving to the second, uh, important point, safety on the, uh, partially county-owned Empire State Trail. So the, the town of New Paltz Planning Board, uh, gave a neg deck to this project in twenty-seventeen. And that was before the EST had really even been conceived, certainly hadn't been installed. And now the EST, as, as many of you know, wraps around the perimeter of that site. Um, and the North Put Corners Road part is under the county's jurisdiction. And, um, so the project's potential safety impact on EST users was not studied in that review process that led to the twenty-seventeen neg deck. And, uh, concerns about risks posed by the project to EST users have been raised repeatedly by the uh, joint town, village of New Paltz Bike Pedestrian Committee. Um, they called the proposed driveway that would come off of two ninety-nine into the site, a quote, major safety risk because the cars would be entering, would be crossing two-way bike and pedestrian traffic on the EST. Um, and they called for the elimination of that driveway. As, as you, many of you know, if you've, uh, driven there recently, there's a significant barrier currently between the EST and Route two ninety-nine for precisely for safety reasons. And so that would be removed and a driveway installed. So granting a drive-through restaurant of this use, um, at this site would substantially increase the volume of traffic crossing this dangerous proposed driveway. And the DOT has not reviewed the safety of the EST crossing since the drive-through restaurant was added to the proposal. And it will surely, such a drive-through will attract considerable throughway traffic, significantly raising the vulnerability of EST users, which, you know, I think the county has interest in protecting EST users. Um, they will become vulnerable to drivers who are probably not expecting to encounter a major non-vehicular trail at a busy intersection. And so the, and the last point, um, is just non-compliance with smart growth principles that the, you know, that the county, uh, that are endorsed in the county design manual and that, uh, the county routinely promotes. So this site falls within what's called a main, what's called the Main Street Mixed Use Zone, where that prioritizes infill, mixed uses, appropriate density and all in an effort to kind of discourage, you know, vehicle-centric sprawl, um, that had characterized adjacent districts previously. This new zone was created with substantial community input and support. And, uh, in December twenty-twenty, so just a few months ago, the New Paltz Town Board voted unanimously to pass a resolution objecting to this applicant's bid for relief, specifically from the second. For relief specifically from the second story requirement. And they wrote that um the elimination of that second floor would be completely contrary to the goals of the zone. Um and permitting one of the last few undeveloped lots in the in that um, in that Main Street Mixed Use Zone. To be developed in a manner that is contrary to the zoning law will have a lasting impact on the character of the entire zone. Um the zone requires density of people in a single location in order to concentrate development, fulfill the goals of smart growth. The the Comprehensive Plan Amendment that created it. Um clearly indicated that concentrated development in this location is a goal for the town. Because of, you know, numerous benefits that all of you are familiar with about eliminating vehicle trips, shared parking. Efficient design with shared entrances and exits, et cetera. Um so the loss of potential residents or additional customers that will come from the, you know, reduction of density would have a negative effect on the district. So that was in the town's resolution. So just my last sentence for you this evening is just that Ulster County. And all of you has a material interest in the safety of the Empire State Trail, traffic conditions at intersections involving county roads, especially major intersections like this one. And in the implementation of planning approaches that are, you know, endorsed by the Ulster County Design Manual and that are kind of. Widely acknowledged now as best practices. So I hope you'll just convey a few trepidations about these variance requests. To the town of New Paltz's ZBA. Thanks a lot. I appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Raise your hand if you want to speak.
All right. Okay, so we'll move on to uh zoning referrals. I will turn it over to you.
All right. Let me just get my screen set up.
All right there, Rob?
I'm fine. I just want to make sure everything is organized in the best way possible. All right, everybody. You want me to start with uh New Paltz? Actually, my.
Why don't we go, why don't we go through them by order, Rob?
Hang on, I want to stop my share for a second. I think I'm sharing the wrong thing.
Right file, I think.
Yeah, hang on, so.
You just gotta start in the beginning.
Yes. SOPUS Local Law eight.
Yeah, let me uh. Let me stop my share for a sec. Try again. Sorry about that. Bear with me one second. No, that's weird. I am sharing, I am clicking on, I am sharing the right thing, but it's taking me to the uh. To the other thing. One sec.
That was the right one, Rob.
No, well, it's taking me to the uh not the um. I can do this. Okay. No, it keeps. It looks like I'm sharing the uh not the present presentation mode. Is that correct?
You look fine for us. You look good for us.
Okay, great.
You're fine with us.
Great, then I'll do that. All right.
Now you, now you're not. Nope, you're you're good. You just switched off for a bit. Now you're fine. Just keep going.
All right, well. I'm I'm sharing screen two. I just want to make sure I'm not. Okay, let me try that.
Uh it's Ulster County Plan Board Land Use Referrals for April seven, twenty twenty.
All right, does it look right now? Does it look like it's in presentation?
Yeah, you're fine.
Okay, good. I just needed to move it to the right place. Okay. So off we go. Town of Asopis, they actually referred this to us for our marchman meeting. We decided. It was a comprehensive townwide update to their zoning code, and we wanted extra time to review it. So this is a complete update to the code. Um, let's see, and they touched on many different areas. Overall, they did a great job. It was an out-of-date statute that dated mostly from the nineties or even earlier. And didn't have many the um items in it, and I'll go through it, and added a lot of new progressive items to it as well. So it's. Gone from an older statute in the county to a pretty progressive one. So generally, we like to compliment them on it. So a couple of things, there are new zoning districts. There's a Rondo Gateway District, which is north of the Hamlet Port U N. Basically, your spinning webber area. And so that's gonna be a gateway zone. There's change in designation to the uh, what was the general commercial zone is now a G C one, which is the more urban area of Port U N. And I believe the Asopis Hamlet, and there's also a G C two, which is general commercial on Route nine W, but is also more rural in nature. So they uh spread that out. It also included a mixed use floating zone. Within it that we previously reviewed, that's in there. Change in schedule use. We used to have to keep, and we still have in the office, copies of the standard industrial classification code. Purely for this code and other codes written in the seventies and eighties. Uh they removed that and uh modernized the land use. Section of it, no longer relying on standard industrial classifications, which is okay. Um accessory apartment regulations, this is an excellent move forward, and I'll get into it with comments about that. Multi-family changes, they remove minimum lot sizes for multi-family, what they now call multiple dwelling. So they were, they used to have two acre lot sizes, those are just deleted. So there's a lot more flexibility for providing multi-family. The one of the main thrusts of the zoning statute is providing more housing. Uh they provide community residential facility for disabled standards. You recall a couple of years back, they tried to have a group home. In a community, and I believe it was ultimately denied. Now they have standards and a methodology to uh enable that to occur. All change to dependents in fifty-five. They're allowing people who are in fifty-five plus housing to have dependents. That's a nice little change there. They have a whole new short-term rentals law, and I'll get into that. If a campground hospitality use regulations, no comment on that one. Whole new section on renewable energy systems. This includes electric vehicle charging, small-scale wind. And they're adding, the town's finally adding a solar. Small-scale and large-scale utility, what they call utility scale solar to the uh, to their statute. Also recall that the town has issues with uh raising, keeping and raising domestic fowl. They had a whole new section on that to deal with that. The town also didn't have a wireless telecommunications standard in the code. They now have that. And they include updated, deleted their whole signage section, added a whole new signage section with. Pictures and drawings. There's a lot more graphics in this statute now, so that's great. And they also have a sign, digital sign standards, which is very timely because there are two new digital signs in the gateway area that really need some uh. Regulation. Yeah, moving on. So, require mods and advisory comments. One, congratulations. Two, there is gonna be a new file, uh we'd like the G S data for their file map for inclusion on our uh. County-wide G S database. Billboards are now prohibited in the code, so we applaud that, but they didn't amortize them. They're advertising other types of signs like um. Movable signs or temporary signage, they're amortizing that. I don't know why they're not.
Rob, if you don't mind, does this, is this local law have to do with the uh bus shelters that were there for a long period of time?
That, it's in there, and they, we we previously reviewed that, the whole new bus shelter code. So we had no problem, we had no kind of impact on that when we reviewed that a couple of months back, I think in December. Uh so just a comment that they should put an amortization for billboards over time. Uh much of the corridor, they have in that G C two corridor, they do have what's called their Route nine W overlay. Zone, they still, while they call for buffering in certain areas, they don't call for. Putting parking on the rear side is a first option. They should at least make that, if not mandatory, they should. You typically, what we like to see is do that as a mandatory with a proviso that says. Show us why you can't do that if you can't. And that's pretty common. Um, since this is such a comprehensive standard and they had site design standards, they should. Uh up to include um outdoor lighting standards that should include. Types, not only types of fixtures, but they should include lighting levels, reference dark sky. And uh I E S and uh the Illuminating Engineering Society lighting levels, they should do a little bit more deeper dig into that. Rather than still have the uh standard no glare on to, no glare trespass onto other properties. That's a kind of old. They can, when they could be a lot more specific on that. Uh they have a couple of errors in their referral to the county plan board. They don't reference the charter. And they also don't mention the uh thirty days or two days before taking final action, and we'd like them to note that. Coming to accessory apartments, the way they do accessory apartments is. You have to have, if you have twice or more, the minimum acreage of the zone. It's basically as of right use. So it's um. And those public hearing, but if it is uh without what they call without acreage, then it becomes a special permit. Under the zone. So what we'd like to do is, and this is a common theme for all accessory apartments. Or what they're, they're actually not calling them accessory apartments, they're calling them. Um accessory dwelling, accessory dwelling units is what they're calling them.
Yep.
So what we'd actually like to say for that is not special permit, make it as easy as possible for accessory apartments to occur. So. Add a maximum site plan review, avoid the public hearing. And try to, and what other codes we've seen is they're doing it on a ministerial basis. So, but if they run into an issue where. A particular site might be difficult, or there might be issues with it. Then have the building inspector recommend that they should go for site plan review. Try to make, make it as easy as possible for these types of things occur. Uh low solar law is fine, but there's no mention of solar battery storage. They should have a message, message about that. They have their whole new energy section, but don't talk about. Um energy efficiency and new construction. That should be a consideration. They should consider that as an addition. Uh, let's see, I have other advisory comments. Short-term rentals are typical, and these, I don't know if these rise to require mods or. Advisory, but we recommend they have their same renewal date. Like we always say, December thirty-first, they should all expire on that date. This way, it's easy to manage the process. And the town does provide for non-owner occupied. They should put a cap, should give them, put a set aside so they can give themselves a cap on those. Uh so they have the whole electrical vehicle charting station, which is a very good law, but they didn't require, well, we're gonna start. Recommending that they're required for any multiple, multiple dwelling residences. And we recommend that here. Uh utility scale solar, typical comments, uh wildlife fencing, huh? And avoid prime soils. I believe they are avoiding prime soils. I don't know how that got back. I think you put that back in there. They have a pretty, um, they have a s- a scale of avoiding soil types, and it's actually really good.
Okay.
I don't think we need that in there. Uh telecommunications towers, two different, they have a whole prioritization schedule. So one thing we recommend is that height should be limited to ten feet above the tree canopy where possible. And that one of their prioritizations are looking at multiple smaller towers rather than a single larger tower where possible as well. And that's it. That's what I got. Anything else to ask you, go ahead, Dan?
No, I I mean, I I had gone through this after, after you and I talked, I took a quick look at it, and it is a progressive statute. The only thing I I guess I would say is, is that um they may want to play with some of the density. We may want to make an advisory comment with some of the density provisions. That's, that's the only thing I would say. Um and that would be, that would be in areas with water and sewer. They may want to think about uh density, specific density. Um availability of density relative to bonuses uh for affordable housing. That's the only thing, and it'd be advisory.
Okay.
Okay, um. I didn't ask before, but are there any recusals for this?
I'm in trouble here, and you missed the brown.
Oh, okay, let me see if I can turn up the volume.
Nobody from Asopis is here tonight.
I didn't think so, but I just wanted to make sure.
Just double checking.
All right.
Motion to support staff with Dennis's comment in there.
I'll make the motion.
Glenn, did you second that?
Hold on a second. Vince made the motion. The second was was Glenn Goodall, is am I correct?
I'll second it. I guess I was slow to the draw.
You were slow to the draw.
All right. Any abstentions? Anyone opposed? Okay. Staff recommendation is supported. Next, Britain Graph.
Britain Graph, uh let's see. But this is, I believe, this is the third time we review this. I'm gonna try and share the uh. Let's see, oh, let me, before I do anything like that, let me make sure I'm on the right webpage here. Okay, let's, that's not. You sure? Got too many windows open. Okay. Okay, you see that?
Yes.
Okay, you see it here. Okay, so Britain Graph. Okay, good. This is uh Route nine W here. This is the operation. We've reviewed this about three or four times now. So it's a fuel operation. We reviewed these tanks here. There's a shelter over in this location. They're proposing another. Um, location around that area as well now. And it'll be sealed in concrete with a shelter for two fifty thousand gallon propane tanks. So a couple of comments on that. Let me go back. Just let me know if I lose you with my switching of screens.
Oh, you're good, Rob.
All right, my mouse is being a little wonky. So there is a containment area layout, just so you know, a lot, I remember last time we made a lot of comments about blast radius and. Things of that, so they're taking extra care about that with their foundation and their framing. So as I said, that that red arrow is where the new one's going to go. That's what it looks like. And they did some more uh landscaping topography, so you can see there's fencing and landscaping along it. Trying to obstruct the view. That's another view of it. That's just some of the uh concrete strength, up to three thousand P S I's.
That's a containment area. That's a containment area, right?
Yeah, that's how, so you got concrete, three, three thousand P S I and steel reinforcement up to sixty thousand P S I. And the footings are forty-eight feet deep, inches, I think that's. So, so require modifications. I believe we made this last time. Like to see some lighting details for security purposes on that. A more detailed landscaping hand plan, we have a rendering, like to see actual details, what types of species, exact locations. Formalize it on site pan. Uh so we keep seeing these expansions of more fuel storage. At what point do we say enough? They, the town should consider what the uh overall limits of development of the site are. Bar department approval, there's a require mod. And also, you have existing tanks that do not have this kind of surround. They should go back, upgrade those areas that are not currently protected in the way the two new portions of the site are. And consider that, this is a site plan amendment.
Yeah, and 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 part of this is, they may not be code required. I'm not, I'm not sure, but part of this is you start getting more and more of these tanks on site. If one of them catches fire, you want to make sure that it doesn't into the other tanks.
Right.
Support staff recommendations.
Con your second.
Is it Vivian?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, it's passed. Next, Rhonda Gardner.
Rhonda Gardner, this is a uh no county impact, it's just for a two lot subdivision for two single family homes. I'd like to send out another note to town gardener trying to get him to sign our exception agreement.
Motion to support.
Call your second.
Who is the motion? Vince, thank you, are there any recusals to this?
Sorry about that.
No one here from Gardner?
Thanks, Glenn. Need abstentions.
Any abstentions?
I'm sorry, I just wanted to point out there's an L in silver.
Thanks, Glenn.
Yeah, I I have a. Hmm I have it on the actual referral sheet, it's just on the PowerPoint, that's not, it's misspelled. Anyway, another no county impact, this is a lot line revision. And uh on three different parcels where they're transferring twenty five acres of property to Mohawk Preserve be forever wild.
McCarthy motion.
Con your second.
Thank you.
Any abstentions? Any objections? Okay. Motion passes. Any recusals?
Alright. So this city Kingston. Is taking a different approach to short term rentals. And the change that we're seeing so far, I haven't seen anything else, or whether you're going to great very specificity on this. But their change, as you can see, is the definition of hotel or motel and hotel. And what they're doing is is adding short term rentals to the definition of hotels. And hotels are allowed in the C one, C two, C three, O three, R F R and R F H zones.
So it it's a it's a fairly elegant solution. Because of the structure of the city zoning code, uh the city's uh uh code, not necessarily all of it's in the zoning. So when you look at this, you would say to yourself, well, what ends up happening with all of the things we normally require? And the short answer is when you go look in the in the in the code, they have a licensing requirement, an inspection requirement, et cetera, for hotels. Um and motels um in the in a different part of the code. So they they cover a lot of those quality of life issues, they cover them in in a different part of in the in a different part of the code, so it. It is a relat- relatively elegant solution. Um and it with the minimum, when they accomplish a short term rental law with a minimum amount of um. With a minimum amount of changes to the zoning statute, there are some things, however, that they don't accomplish, and Rob will go into those.
Sure, one sec, um I know somebody was raising their hand from the public, I'm sorry, public comment is over, you had that earlier in the meeting. So. Your required modifications, one, since they have no uh. Regulations for short term rental, we should uh, they should make some changes to the zoning statute that have. Reflects short term rentals, one, our typical comment about prohibition of short term rentals in multifamily, whether proposed or existing. They should cap on no on non owner occupied for your uh. For those permits for short term rentals, I mean, if they're going to occur just in the hotels, it may not. Need as many of those caps. What's of course, they'll also need a right after short term rentals, like all other hotels will need a register with the county for hotel bed tax. But with the short term rentals, they'll also need to make sure they're responsible for uh, you know, quality of life issues on site.
Yeah, they should name the responsible party, and show that if there is a problem that somebody has to respond.
Right, as you notice, part of the definition for hotel doesn't require concierge, for example, of course, in the county office building. We have a hotel unit that is basically going to be. You walk in wireless, you know, you're 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 get your your room from down the street, but from the other hotel location. You're able to walk in and get your hotel room, there's no concierge, no staff on site at it. So they may, I don't know if the town, the city wants to go through with this, but the hotel, we just wanna make an advisory comment that they should include a front desk concierge. Staff is part of their definition for having hotels, which might be contrary to keeping short term rentals under a hotel. There are also some unintended consequences from this, if you're moving all S D O short term rentals, basically according to this from residential zones. Was that their intent? I don't know. What happens to anything buddy who in those residential zones had an existing short term rental? They have to address those issues. And I don't know if it was intended or not, if it was intended, that may be a good thing.
I mean, it seems if they define them as hotels and they look at the at where they're permitted in the zoning statute, that a short term rental would not be permitted in the areas where hotels aren't permitted.
Right.
Um so they would have to treat, they'd have to treat um short term rentals that currently exist in those areas as nonconforming uses. One would presume.
Right, and what were the first floor issues you you wrote a.
The 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 thing that ends up happening is ho- hotels are 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 not restricted, if you look at some of their commercial zones, they require retail or. A a a use of that nature on the first floor. And now what ends up happening, if you define, if you define them as as short term rentals. We're not sure what's gonna happen to the residences that are in those that are in those districts, and there's quite a few. Also, some of the first floor issues may disappear as well, because they can convert them and call those first floors, uh since there's. Said there doesn't appear that I saw any size restriction to call it a hotel, you could have one unit or two units. You could essentially move into the short term rental and and move and move those into the first floor. But I, we wanna basically make this advisory, because we wanna make sure that we're not missing something in the code that they're that they're aware of that we didn't see.
Yeah, the city has no specific code requirements as it relates to hotels or motels, there's no set specific standards for them.
I mean, there are, when you look in that other section of the statute, there are specific standards for parking, there's reviews. I didn't see a size standard in there, I didn't see that, you know, in order to call yourself a hotel, you have to have X number rooms. They do establish in that other section of the code, they do establish um that you have to have to provide a maximum occupancy. So one of the other questions we're gonna raise was occupancy issues, but they established that in that other section of the code that you have to submit where you're max- where you're at maximum occupancy.
Dennis, a Rob a question on that? So with the nonconforming of existing. Do they have a current? Knowledge of where these are existing, because otherwise. You know, they're not, I I understand somebody would have to prove that they were in operation by a certain time, but. If they're not allowed currently under zoning, wouldn't they potentially be? Uh illegal right now, so. In theory, there wouldn't be any nonconforming in residential unless they had some sort of a uh of a. Certification or approval or or, you know, a legality to their operation.
Yep, it it's a good question, Mike, and and I'm sure the city will will solve that with expeditiously, as they say.
Okay.
But I hear what you're saying is is is, they 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 certainly haven't enforced anything on those, so one would presume that. That they haven't, if they haven't enforced them, that there's some thought that they are, in point of fact, not illegal.
Got it, thank you.
Alright.
I'll I'll make the motion to support staff comments.
I'll second it, Conia.
Thank you, John. Okay, any abstentions? Any objections? Alright, we're going on to Marbleton. Um any recusals?
Gonna move that slide, Rob.
Alright. Alright. Go ahead.
So this is a no county impact, um it's an other special authorization, kinda loosely related to land use. Regarding regulation control of delivery of fill and. Has permitting procedures for excess of two hundred yards for permitting process, and much of it fall. Falls on looking at a polar permits and fees and monitoring of. Of the uh fill and and of that, uh there's no county impact on this.
On your second.
Thank you. Any abstentions? Or any objections? Okay, passes. Alright, down in New Paltz, any recusals?
Yes.
Amanda, thank you. This is for the area variance, yep.
Town New Paltz, okay. I know we're all pretty familiar with the site, but I'll um I'll share share the aerial again, just. Re-familiarize ourselves, go through. There we are. So this is the site. Route two ninety nine, North Putt Corners Road.
So, Rob, just just uh if you can, just highlight the Empire State Trail.
I can, well, the Empire State Trail, I mean, it's going along, it's going, well, like, it's now gonna cut in and go behind. It's better if I show you on the site plan where it's gonna be.
Well, I just wanna show where it was, so.
Okay, where it was was going across and around.
Okay, thank you.
To highlight the Sheldon's comments from before, but there is a different location for it now. Um I'm gonna go back to the PowerPoint. Everybody see the PowerPoint again?
Yep.
Okay, just wanna make sure. Okay, so just a little bit of history, so we have three area variances before us. And the town, we're in that mixed use, um mixed use, um multi, yeah, M S M U district. For the for the town, which requires multifactorable second story. And also prohibits uh food and beverage drive-throughs. Now, the procedure for that, for granting waivers, what the applicant did in this case is they actually requested waivers on these things. And if they got. What's that?
From who did they request the waivers?
From the planning board, and they requested the waivers from the planning board. And in order to get them straight out, they had to have a unanimous vote from the planning board. They got approval from the planning board, but not unanimously, so therefore, under their town law, they went to the town board, and as pointed out, they got. Rejected unanimously, so now we're seeing it, another avenue of trying to get around this through. The uh Z B A by asking for actual variances. So one of our issues has to, we're a little. Leery of the whole concept of you've already been rejected once, and now you're coming in again another way, and we'll we'll make a comment about that. Uh coming in and getting, once having been rejected once, coming in another, getting a double dipping, so to speak. So. I'm just gonna, I'll go to the site plan here. So this is the um concept plan for the site, we don't have a transportation study yet, we don't have a lot of site details, all we have is this and some concept imagery. As you can see from it, it does more conform to what the M S M U was supposed to be. The buildings are at the front of the street. And the trail avoids this dangerous right hand in and goes into the site beforehand, and it comes around. And then connects, actually goes all the way to the bottom of the site, and then connects out and continues on your way to uh Du Bois. There's actually even a little parking area in here and a uh kiosk that's for the uh trail support. So that is actually an improvement to the site conceptually. Now. Problem though is that the, when we reviewed. The comprehensive plan for this, it was going to be two stories, had an occupiable two stories, and none of those are proposed in that case, or not. Going to the, let me actually, let me just jump to, let me just take you through. The uh, what it looks like.
I think, yeah, there you go.
Let me see that, that's North Putt Corner, so you can see they have some architectural elements to it, but that's not an occupiable second story. Yes, it's built to the street, yes, there's sidewalks. I don't know if it's context sensitive, it's New Paltz itself, though, or the Village of New Paltz, but that's what it looks like from the road, so.
And that's from, that's from two ninety nine, correct?
That is from two ninety nine, so, yes, it looked a lot better than what it was, but doesn't meet the intent of the M S M U zone, not entirely. Let me go back real quick to the that drive-through. And this is a prohibited use, and we're asking for a use uh for an area variance on that. And we have just.
The drive-through is here, Rob, right?
This is the drive-through right here in question.
There you go.
So that is, so there's a, so while this drive-through here is allowed, but they allowed for non-food operations, this one is not. And while we don't have an updated. Traffic analysis for that, we know that additional drive-throughs will have negative impact on on a traffic situation, we also know that. This is a pretty small queue, we don't have a queuing analysis, and if you're coming into the site from here. And trying to make this loop into there, I don't know whether they're gonna have people, they could have people come all the way around and there. I don't know, we don't know what how this queue is going to work, so we need some more information on that queue also. It's a prohibited use, and it's and and it's spelled out as prohibited use, so we're a little. Unclear as to how this is an area variance, and whether they should actually apply for a use on that particular uh drive-through. Yes.
So if you're saying that the planning board has rejected it as it as it is, correct?
No, the planning board actually had a four to two vote of. Yes, but then it had to go to town board and they rejected it.
So town board rejected it, and the D O T hasn't reviewed, hasn't reviewed it currently? Well, we don't know that, we didn't see anything from D O T, but we don't know that they haven't. I mean, it's a legitimate request to, it's it's legitimate in front of the, in front of the zoning board of appeals. It's just a question, it's just a question of of. Is can you appeal the decision of a of a planning board to a zoning board of appeals, and typically, you can't.
Robert Dennis, has the seeker been completed on this?
Yes, but as 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 noted, the seeker was done in two thousand seven.
That's right, yeah, the speaker.
And the users have changed.
Right, and it's a coordinated review, I haven't seen the seeker on it yet, so it's gonna be come from the planning board when I see it for site plan.
And Rob, you're saying it's a prohibited use, correct?
The one drive-through for the eating establishment.
Okay.
Yeah. Rob, can I can I make a comment?
Sure.
I'm a lot older than you, so you may not know what a shoe horn is, but that's what that looks like these people are trying to do.
I have a shoe horn in my drawer right next to.
So should we make a motion to deny it and send it back?
My uh required mods first, so. While we understand that. The when considering the two occupiable stories, they should, the town, the Z B A, if looking at, should grant the minimum variance necessary, if at all. They should consider the comp plan and. For this area, which called for for a occupable second story, and also the demand for affordable housing in the area, and what. The need for that is part of that. So if they don't have it on one building, but they have it on the rest, that might work. So something that accomplishes most of the goal of the comprehensive plan is, would be the minimum variance necessary. Generally speaking, we say they should comply with the code, but if they're gonna grant the variance, it should be the minimum variance necessary. Uh drive-through, they they should ask. Do an interpretation in this case, we recommend they do a use variance or interpretation, see whether that actually requires use variance rather than area variance for that. Um also, as part of looking at.
Understand, uh they they did try to make a case in their filings, they did try to make a case that it was an area variance, but. It it's tough to look at this and start to say that that these things are prohibited, and somehow. You can, you can interpret this to be an area variance, because you're requesting the drive-through. So the zoning board of appeals should should take a hard look as to whether or not this is. Point of fact, a use variance. Rather than an area variance. Point of fact, a use variance, um, rather than an area variance.
Right.
History of how it got classified as an area variance, or is the applicant just saying?
I think.
Want an area variance.
I think that's the applicant is making that case, not, not, it's not been classified, to the best of our knowledge. We haven't seen a determination from the, from the building inspector, the zoning enforcement officer, that a point of fact, it's an area variance.
Right, we see a case from the applicant from an area variance, we don't see a determination of the. So the other comments I had about, as part of, since they are doing a coordinated review under seeker, and you have a. One of the things they're requesting a variance from is traffic related, they have. As part of conducting any review of this variance, they should be looking at the traffic impacts, which includes the latest traffic study. And a look at queuing analysis is for that, for, for that, uh. And those are our comments.
Yeah, just, just so you know, if I may, Vince. Um, just so you know, one of the reasons we're not commenting on the, on the traffic, I, I mean, we, we do. On the traffic issue as it relates to the right turn off of two ninety-nine. Is that the relocation of, of the uh. The relocation of the Empire State Trail actually pulls that out of that. Um, most of the traffic out of that, out of that discussion, because it, it moves the, it moves the uh, the folks using that trail. Before they, before that right turn uh, takes place.
Can we put a uh, required mod in there that says that the DOT must review it?
Yeah, it's, the short answer is yes, Vince, uh, we don't have a problem with that, that's what the traffic, that's what the traffic, that uh, impact work is, is for.
Well, eventually, this is gonna have to go to, back to the planning board for site plan anyway.
That's correct.
These variances, and the, the planning board cannot approve it without. The DOT being involved, because that's a new access, that they'll need a, an access permit, so.
Well, yeah. A, and, and the interesting thing here is the planning board's the lead agency under seeker. So they've conducted the coordinated review, so the planning board would have to look at this, or the ZBA would have to reject the seeker findings.
Right.
Um, from the planning board and say, we think a new traffic study is necessary, and that becomes a supplemental. In this case, because we've already been through a, an impact statement on this, we already had an egg deck.
Could we add an advisory comment of just since the seeker is four years out of date, and the project has changed substantially? That the ZBA should uh, consider doing, uh.
Yeah.
Reopening the seeker for their own review.
I think they are doing, they're conducting a coordinated review right now.
Yeah, they are, so I think that, that would, one of the things we can say is. As an, as an advisor, as we note that the, that there's a coordinated review ongoing, and the decision with respect to this should await that, that final. That final uh, determination from the coordinated review.
And that's the planning board doing the coordinated review?
Yeah.
Okay, well, yeah, they, they, they actually, they have no choice, they have to wait till that's done before they can make a decision, but.
Right.
Was there prior approval granted before the zone, the special zone was created?
Um, I'm not.
No, it was not, it was before us, and they were about to make the change, and I think they made the change, if I recall correctly, they made the change before.
They put a moratorium in place.
I think Mr. Murray has something to say on that.
Uh, not specifically on that, but uh, since that two seven, uh, twenty seventeen study. That uh, North Putt area is an emergency services corridor, we have a um, five-day. Seven million dollar firehouse now under construction there, we've got the new uh, town police. Court building going there, we've got a rescue squad there, so any kind of traffic impact study is going to pre. Uh, predate the actual usage of that, that, that road, so I think that should be uh. Be put there in some form or fashion.
Good point.
Have a question about the Empire State Trail rerouting, it looks like they put in a U-turn. For that right turn, and that, I can't imagine a bicycle traffic going around that sharp U-turn. Is there an obstacle they're trying to get around?
It's, it, get down a hill.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, the, the project site is probably what, at least ten feet lower than two ninety-nine?
They're gonna fill it, but um, they gotta get, they gotta get around, you know, and, and pull them off, that's not a bad, that's not a bad turn for a bike, you know?
Can I just make a, a very brief point of clarification about the routing of the trail? Very brief, just that, I just wanted to point out, you're absolutely, everything that's been said is absolutely correct, the, the rerouting of the trail is a great improvement. Um, I just wanted to note that a lot of traffic will continue west onto Main Street, to, you know. For all the reasons that you all know, also just down south, but is the high school. So I just wanted to point out that while it's fantastic, and a lot of traffic will be diverted. Down, you know, oh, around the back of the site and away from that dangerous intersection, there will still be a considerable. Amount of uh, bike and pedestrian traffic cross, potentially crossing that, that second uh, entrance. Uh, into ninety-nine.
I mean, I realize that the planes can have to end up reviewed by the DOT, but I still want to comment in there. Yeah, that, we're, we're fine with that, Vince, we'll, we'll, we'll make that as part of, as part of the work, because, I mean, that's what a coordinated review does.
Do we even know that the state is willing to have the trail rerouted?
They have, they have had some discussions with the state, and I, the state is okay, they, they may end up with the. It, it's, it may end up being a science question, Glenn, and I don't know. You know, but the, I, I can tell you that the town wants it rerouted.
Motion is support staff Watkins.
Just for clarification, that's what the additions we talked about, Dennis and Rob?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any, um. We got the recusal.
Yep.
Any abstentions? I'm gonna abstain.
Who, who said that?
Brown.
Thanks, Chair.
Any opposition? Motion passes. Okay, on to Olive.
Gary, it's Drew, I'm recused, Dennis.
Okay, thank you, Drew.
So, we have two laws from the town of Olive, one is with subdivisions, one is with uh. The uh, zoning law do uh, subdivisions first. Uh, this one is just minor changes, no county impacts, uh, going away from the L dead ends to T, only TDLN, T-Dot. Dead ends, treating lot line adjustments as minor subdivisions, and just some minor changes with uh, re-lettering. So there's no county impact on this.
Motion is support staff.
Your second.
What, what is the reason for changing this?
Changing what?
Changing from um, re, removing L as an option.
Oh, that's, is the uh, turning movement for fire, for, for larger vehicles.
Okay.
They all, the T section is the much more uh, prude one.
The L is almost impossible to plow well, and the T is a much easier option to plow.
Okay, thank you.
Who made the motion on that?
McCarthy.
McCarthy.
And Conner.
On your.
On your's a second, yeah.
Any abstentions? Any opposition? Motion passes. All of again. Drew, you still out?
Yes, I'm recused on this one too.
So, zoning code, again, some minor changes, clarification to zoning statute, but with some. Look, I'll call them less minor changes. Uh, so, they added a, uh, an addition to the minimum dwelling size, which is normally six hundred feet. And they're now considering tiny houses which are four hundred square feet. Uh, to be, as defined in the International Residential Code, as being uh, allowed in all districts, we just remind them that if they're considered a dwelling unit. It's still consistent with the zoning, so if you're allowing one dwelling unit per acre, and you get a four hundred square, you wanna put a tiny house on it, that's your dwelling unit. Unless you're gonna put a detached, I guess you can do an accessory apartment on that too. Uh, so we just wanna make sure they note that. Uh, two family dwellings are now principal permitted uses, don't require site plan review, they're now. As right, accessory apartments are going to be allowed in all districts, which is great. Um, they're accessory to the principal permitted use in all districts. Uh, but the, let's see, they got some special permit, and what, what we'd like to do is keep that, again, seem similar to Asopus. Is try to keep it to a minimum regulation as possible, try to do it. As of right, or as site plan review at most, avoid public hearings with respect to them, is what we wanna do, is encourage. Uh, housing, affordable housing options as much as possible. So, comments on this one, let's see, they do require water and sewer approvals, uh, let's see, max one per lot. Let's, one, the big one thing is one acre or more lot, if located within principal residence, two more acres are required if. On the same lot, let's see. Go to my comments here. One, just, this is, and this is something actually town of Asopus did, they did a five-year um, prohibition on short-term rentals and accessory dwelling units. We recommend they do something similar in uh, town all that they put prohibit for at least. That five-year time span that they'd be used immediately as short-term rental options. Uh, minimum lot size, we recommend that they remove that constraint, permit them by right accessory dwelling units. Site plan review with determination by the building inspector, given site constraints. So, would uh, more able facilitate them. Uh, affordability, let's see, and we recommend, we're, we're recommending for a lot of these, uh, the, except the accessory dwellings or. Is that they be treated as no more than, given affordable set aside, ma- make them no more than hood fair market rent. Or again, for like a time, five-year period. Uh, let's see, and also remove the special permit provisions for. In exist, for accessory dwellings that are within existing residences with health, as long as you have the health department approval. Um, let's see, and, and other ways of encouraging accessory apartments, if their goal is to allow, allow the increase. They should give consideration to enlarging the principal dwelling, if, or existing accessory structures to allow for apartment. Use with uh, no uh, density penalties, and, and those situations, those would be uh, for site plan review, that would be warranted.
Think of this as what they did with two family, with, with two family dwellings, they're allowing them to go ahead, so. That, that's, that's why this is, why this is a, a good, a good provision, but we really wanna congratulate the town, it's, it's a major change. Uh, with, with respect to housing, and it allows, cleans up what is a, what is a very cumbersome um. Accessory dwelling unit provision in the statute, we really wanna allow that to, 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 to indicate that we're really happy with that, and, and moving in that direction. Um, but we really think that um, that the short-term rental thing, I think, is really appropriate, otherwise, it really, the, the, the rec. Is really appropriate to prohibit them, because from that, from that perspective, people are gonna, may end up building them just to use them for short-term rentals. And that's not what you wanna have happen.
Motion is support staff Watkins.
Second, Mike Baden.
Thank you.
Dennis, so Rob, you know, was this the work of a consultant, or did the board do this on their own, or the committee, you know?
Oh, oh, Drew does have to recuse himself now, you already voted, so.
Well, we didn't, we just made motions, we didn't vote.
Okay, well. I think they just get it, they may have done with help from a law firm, I believe.
Okay, just curiosity.
Any abstentions? Any objections? Yes.
Hey, Rob, is it okay if I answer Mike's question now?
Absolutely, go for it.
Last year, Mike, our supervisor appointed a zoning committee to look at our zoning code, subdivision code, so right now, we're doing it on our own. But um. Sort of taking, I think, I think that accessory apartment came from Marble Town, and we. Dogged it.
Okay.
And we're working on short-term rental now, which we took your code and mostly use that. So, at some point, we may wind up having to get a consultant, but right now, we're trying to do some of this stuff without it.
In-house.
I also noticed that one of the changes in the uh, the zoning code is they gave the planning board the power to hire consultants to do. Certain site plan reviews, which is a great addition to that law, by the way. Okay.
All right, let's move on to Sargi's Village, do I have any recusals?
Okay, all right, three seventeen Main Street, I'm gonna go to the aerial first. And I don't think that's it. I'm too far ahead of myself, nope, that is it, here we are. Here we are, so here we are. Is this thing convenience store on Main Street? They have been looking at, this is an interesting. Um, old photos of um, what it used to look like with the two-story building, and are actually, what they're proposing to do is. Remodel it, go up a floor, put in two apartments, and kind of bring it back to, try and bring it back to the way it used to look, which is great. So here's what it is. So that's existing site plan right there. One of the things you'll see is that there's open, there's one curb cut, and I'll show you this later, you'll see, and I, I have some site photos too. Curve cut here, this is basically an open curb cut, these back pretty much into the right of way. Next slide, so this is what they're proposing, so you can see, parking is better delineated. Uh, there's parking behind, they did a lot line deletion as part of this, and put parking behind. And parking on the side, put some landscaping in the back as well. But really didn't change anything with respect to access. Just today, I had, one of the comments was originally the elevations, but I just actually got building elevations, and so I'm happy about that. And that's what it's gonna look like, so you're going, and I'll show you what it currently looks like in a sec. And that's what it's going to. Still gonna be, I guess, a convenience store operation on the first floor. That could be real. But as you can see, this is what the unchanalized access kind of looks like. And that's the, that's the part, that's the uh, Market Street side of it, that's that, so, and that's, this is the second floor, those are the apartment units. So, I'm just gonna go back to the site plan real, real quick. So. Thoughts about it with respect to access, I mean, first off, great job, I, I, I wanna commend what they're trying to do, adding apartments. And um, retrofitting a site, first comment, we made this with another apartment conversion recently, that they should try, if possible, to. Avoid using these uh, two new rental apartments for short-term rental. Got a comment, with respect to access, they should consider, especially in light of these parking movements back into the street. They may, they should be considering closing up this access, channelizing it at this location. And then maybe considering making this a right turn in only off Market Street. And trying to flip the parking, maybe make parallel parking at this location, I don't, putting the uh, handicap accessible spot over on the side. And then, you pick up these amazing remaining spots, possibly, we'll have to, we'd have to coordinate with the local uh. Uh, highway department, but they might be able to pick up those spots by making it on the street, if they close up that access, but it would make it a lot safer access. Rather than having these backing movements.
So this over here, Rob, would still remain a full movement?
Yes, that would remain a full movement, we'd have to talk about fire district or turning, see where truck turning movements were occurring. I mean, right now, I'm guessing you might be able to do some truck turning movements through the site. Because of that.
They come all the way out here, they would come all the way out to there, can you erase, Rob? Just erase, erase what you're doing?
I am erasing.
Hey Dennis, they do that right now when they make deliveries at that store. Yeah, so what, what Rob is suggesting is you actually run a line of parking through here as, as it's parallel parking. And by closing this off through here, you actually pick up on, on-street parking that could be available here, and then this becomes a full turning movement.
Right.
It'd be too close to do that, I mean, it, it's close as it is right now. No, no, you, uh, these are parallel parked, so these are, these are parked this way.
I think Ben's saying that this is too close to this turn right here, is what he's saying.
Like, if you make the right-hand turn off the market, onto Main, further to the store. There's not enough room in the, in the street, okay, but even if, even if that's the case, you should be able to get your four, four or five spaces right in front of here. Okay, that you want to, but the, with the street parking, that would be. The main thing is, is the main thing is, is to, to have them take a look at alternative layouts, because that backing into the street is not a, not a good. The main thing is, is the main thing is, is to, to have them take a look at alternative layouts because that backing into the street is not a, not a good thing.
No, and and the only reason why it was open like that Dennis is because at one point when it was covered with farms, there was a gas pumps there.
Yeah, yeah.
Pumped out, hence that's why the opening is there.
Rob, the intersection of Main and Market, that's a, that's a traffic light there, right?
Yes.
So. That access here. Even if it's only a right turn in from Market, which I think is, is a reasonable idea, it should be closed down, so it's just what. The ability for only one way in because.
You want, you want to hook it in.
Yeah, we get, we get it, Mike.
Go out and try to make that right and, and then there's nowhere for them to queue.
Yeah, we get it, Mike, yeah. It would be a one way movement.
Yeah, but it's.
And we don't want to solve it tonight, we just want to give them an option to that backing movement, that's all.
Yep, and the only thing, other thing I'll say in regards to the uh truck deliveries is. Right now, as it stands, they make that, as Mike pointed out, there's that um. You know, the area where he suggested that they close off trucks right now, when you make deliveries, they make the right hand turn into that spot there. And kind of like go right in front of the store and make their deliveries there now.
That's actually a good. Another question to bring up, Rob, that Vince just said deliveries because. Once a delivery truck goes in there, it's just gonna stop everything.
Right, so that's when they make, when they come down. Uh, right now, okay, and then you make the, their deliveries, they walk through that wall.
That's why we're suggesting they do deliveries off of market. Either on.
So we can, we can add that as a required modification to show tr- truck traffic, that's good. We'll, we'll make that as an additional modification.
Right, so other comments we have.
Our layouts and curb cuts and then the short term rental pro- prohibition, but this is, this is a good, this is something that upgrades this site. It puts investment in the community.
Oh, yeah.
Underutilized site, so we're, we're gonna, we, we, we're gonna say those same things as well.
Comment in here.
Yeah, uh, how many units uh on the second floor?
Two.
Just two, and is the parking for those residents?
Yes.
So that, that, that whole site plan will accommodate, uh, also any uh bike racks or so, or EV stations?
Well, EV stations probably not because of the time, because of the time on site, but the bike rack comment and the comment. Is something I think you're, you're correct in talking about and there's enough room to do that, so we'll add that as well, Bill, thank you.
If you're talking about food trucks or things like that, they're not allowed in the village.
Anyway.
So with it, with the added comments relative to um.
Bike racks.
Bike racks, and I'm trying to think the other one, I apologize for.
Truck traffic.
Truck traffic, thank you.
I'll make the motion to support staff with the uh comment added.
Con your second. Any abstentions? Any opposed? Right, motion passes. Other one for the village, any recusals on the landing at. Okay.
I'm gonna go back to the aerial real quick, tell you where all this is. So this is as you're entering the village. And it's this site over in here, right on the waterfront, right before the bridge. There's gonna be some demolition work in there and uh. Right, all the family townhouses, row house style building. Somebody else talking or I just getting feedback?
Yeah, it could be, if, if, I'm gonna ask people if they can mute themselves when they're not talking.
Getting, you're getting echo.
Okay. That's fair. Okay, so at this location here. All right.
I think it's Mr. Conyer. We're picking up a lot of uh excess noise from his uh microphone. Thank you.
All right. So this is existing condition, did I change the chair again? I think I did, I did, okay, so that's existing conditions, I, there's existing buildings on the property. We're gonna be using the existing driveway on the site and upgrading that to serve the property. This is what they're proposing all along the waterfront are these row houses with a turnaround. Um, their decommissioned septic system can be hooking up to uh municipal water and sewer. They're reme- root that, or leaving one. Story house to remain as an office and maintenance shop though. So th- this is all we have though, basically from them, that the, the site plan calls for point nine acres of disturbance. And it's right next to the creek and the Sopas Creek, as we know lately, has been pretty brackish. And we do have some lighting levels which are okay. Periods all fixtures. Uh, and this is your grading. Yes, I do have some catch basins on site. Let's see. So, but we're, we're at, we're at a point with this particular role, which where we'd like to see a lot more detail. We don't have elevations, we don't have a view of what this would look like. Um, or from the park that's across from it, we'd like to see some. Views of that, we want the point nine acres of disturbance re-verified, make sure that they don't need to do. A SWIP, I know they have done erosion timing control and some. But we want to make sure that's verified that they're doing some stormwater work. And if they're verify whether they're gonna be doing a DC stream disturbance on the site. For access to the site. For that turnaround, we'll need a turning template for fire trucks and sign from the fire department. Uh, we recommend an affordable set aside, given the number of units are proposed. Um, they should consider an EV charging station and energy efficiency for the com- how the building's being constructed, whether to using solar or. Any alternative energy for the site and I think landscaping plan was the other comment with respect to that.
Motion to support staff.
Who's that?
Con your second.
And I think, Mr. McCarthy, you want to say something?
I was wondering, did they have any elevation drawings on that, what was that gonna look like um?
That's precisely our comment, we don't know what.
I, I didn't hear, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that part.
We don't know what's gonna look like and we don't have any, and it's right on the waterfront. We don't know what it's gonna look like from the other side, so zoom out a bit. It has some visual impacts associated with it.
Are they going to allow left turns into that site? Coming downhill street?
Yeah, that's another question, thank you.
That is a very good point.
That's a very nasty hill.
Yeah, yeah. So we do have contact nice dot on there as a recommendation, but my sense would be is, is that the, that the site, we. The site really needs to think about. Additional details before, we'd like to see it be re-refered with the additional details, in particular, some of the visual stuff we're talking about. And also uh some real concern about, there's no road prior, road, road profiles here.
Right.
But we, we would applaud the idea of essentially adding, adding um housing in, in this location with water and sewer, but. You need, you do, you do need some details.
Can we read, just ask them to re-referral?
Well, I think we, we can't require it, but we should, we should ask them to re-referral if, if they're, they're still gathering data here. And they probably should be still gathering data.
Yeah.
Since, can we put it in as an advisory comment?
Yeah.
Re-referral required mod before.
Yeah, we, we, we should, it should be required modification Vincent, and we should remind them that the, the full statement requirements. For the board, if they're, if they're still in the process of gathering data up here, then we should see it again, you know.
I think Dennis, we could do a re-referral required mod, just stating that there's a number of issues.
Yeah, to hear the issues, absolutely.
And require a re-referral once those have been uh ascertained.
Yeah, I, that, that's what, that's what we're gonna do, here's the required modifications and, and this, this should be re-refered.
Right.
That's, that's what I think should happen here.
I agree.
Yeah, uh, what's the uh storm surge level?
Uh, it's quite high, uh, there's a dam down below it, Bill.
Yeah.
So it's right on a dam, so we, we're not that much concerned about. Um, flooding from the creek. Um, that does not mean that there's not drainage issues coming off of the road, we just don't know where it goes.
Right. Good, thank you.
At some of the site where the homes will be built, uh, a pretty steep grade, it kind of looked that way.
We can go back and show you the, the site plan, Vivian.
Uh, that's what I was looking at, the contour lines, the uh right hand side.
Yeah, that there's quite a bit of grading going on.
Right, that's why I asked him for the road profile.
Right in here, there's quite a bit of grading going on right there. We don't, we don't show any retaining wall in there, but there's quite a bit of grading going on in there. Other than that, it looks like what they're gonna do is they're gonna cut and fill through here. Um, and that's not bad, because it drops off, it's, it's better to have something drop off than you have to cut into. So they're running, running to high grade with their road and then they're dropping off over here, but they can just build out over that grade.
Okay.
And is the road, is the road coming into the complex wide enough for other cars to be backing out?
That's a great question, it looks like it narrows down here.
Four feet width.
But, and, and they have this turnaround here.
The entry road's twenty, as I, as I said, it's twenty four feet.
Yeah, it is, Robert, right in here, see with that area right there? Yeah, I, I, that's how they get to point nine.
Make the motion to approve staff comments?
There was already a motion on the floor, sorry.
Oh, who made them, I didn't, Vince?
Vince made a motion. Seconded.
Thank you, Mr. Conyer, I'm sorry, I missed it.
Okay. Okay, any abstentions? Any opposition? Motion passes. Okay, still in the village, um. Four and eight York Street.
Thank you, Robert.
Uh, so Village of uh, uh, Sorgerties is still one of the holdouts with respect to sign our exception agreement, so. I'm gonna be sending one to them, this is no county impact, a lot line deletion to allow to combine two lots for a single family home.
Your group staff comments.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike and Vince.
And just for a point of information, Rob, I remind them about fifteen times in the last year, signing the agreement.
Rob, try to do a required mod to send that's exception.
I will.
I'll send Vince the copy and make then have him hand it to them.
I know you can't do that, but it would be, it would be kind of maybe get our point across.
And what, what did you say, Rob?
I'll, I'll give you a copy so you can hand it to them.
I'll take care of it.
The opposition. Motion passes. All right. Six, First Street. Still no recusals, any recusals, no?
Yeah. Uh, let's see, in the B one.
Excuse me, are we doing the two together, special permit and site plan?
Yes, we are.
Thank you.
So. In the B one zone, they allow three and four family homes, four family requires a special permit. This already was a four family home, but they didn't have the special permit. So now they're requesting it, no county impact on that.
Don't move from McLaughlin.
Con your second. Okay. Any abstentions? Any opposition? Motion passes. Now we're on to six and eight petition. Any recusals there? Okay, go for it.
Other no county impact lot line deletion to make lot six, number uh, number six partition street part of eight partition street, no county.
And motion to support staff comments.
Con your second. All right, any abstentions, any opposition? Okay, passes.
And forward that to me, Rob, I'll, I'll go to the village, I'll take care of it.
And you can, you can also on our website, you can, uh, no, actually, let me forward to you, I have a more recent version, my email.
Sounds good.
I have to update the website with the uh one that's out there.
Okay.
Shandaken, do we have any recusals?
Okay, Shandaken also hasn't signed our exception agreement, but they did sign it, they, over discussion about this, so. Jerry, you'll be getting a copy of this to sign, but it'll be after this application, this is outside five hundred feet and they require variances, we don't usually review anything. For advisory comments outside five hundred feet for variances. Uh, so it's a three, three air variances for a single family home, we do, actually are gonna make an advisory comment on it, I'll show you what it looks like. It's off Muddy Brook Road and it's maybe aptly named, as you can see from the picture in the top. Right hand corner. Doing some demo work in there and putting that house. Built into that uh. That uh cliff face. No, the advisory comment is, there doesn't, they didn't put note the well or the uh septic on it, so they should just get their well and septic. And uh septic permits from the, any permits they need from the health department. They should be noted on the site plan, those locations.
Motion to approve staff comments.
Second, McCarthy.
Sorry, that was Baden. On the motion.
Okay, got you, Mike. Okay, uh, any abstentions?
Jerry, I'm like I'm recused.
Vivian, you're recused?
I, I'm in Shandaken, so.
Well, you're, are, is it coming before you?
I don't know.
Okay, well, you can recuse, okay, you're, well, just easier.
Any abstentions? Any opposition? Motion passes. Okay. Schwangunk. Mark, you there?
Sorry, I was muted. Uh, they're, they're going for a variance, I don't have anything to do with that.
Okay.
All right. So this is Walker Valley Auto and Truck Repair. Uh, the reason they're coming in is because unfortunately they had a fire, they're coming back in and are going to be replacing the building. But rather than design a two story building, they want to set it further back, put it in a new spot and go one story with a larger building. So they need variances, they had previous various approvals. Uh, back in about two thousand and four, being uh pre-existing non-conforming law and pre-existing non-conforming. Years, so they had, already had some existing variances in there. Let's. So that's the lot, um, the biggest thing comment would come so we have on it. And I'm gonna, you can see that we have site plan review, because it's gonna need site plan review for that site. But we have a channelization comment and that is best explained from the aerial. So, we get to that. And that is. That's also nine.
That's not it.
There, that's it. Okay, so our highest site with the previous building is right there. We have a road that goes here, there's an access here, this is a uh town. Have another cut here. We, we recommend they do is town should end, ZB, they should really consider. Closing that, combining driveway access and using. The cut through there for access, it's time to uh. Close up that prob- problematic uh intersection of that location. And I mean, that's an area variance, I don't know if it's, it may become more under site plan review, but from a safety perspective, that. Makes a lot of sense.
You want to basically, Rob? You want to basically do this under area variance, or you just basically want to make the comment under area variance to be considered as part of it?
I think we'll make it an advisory comment at this location.
Okay, that's what I thought, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you and I discussed it, but yeah, it, it really falls, the, this, the channelized part will be a. A site plan review advisory comment, that they should really take a hard look at that intersection and take the opportunity to clean it up.
So we would end up allowing this guy a driveway, right, allowing the new. Allowing this, this a driveway out.
Yeah, the existing driveway is right there.
And then what you could do is take, is take everything else out this way.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, so you can close it up here is what you're saying.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, and then you would, you would make this, you'd make this a driveway, so it could be a lot smaller.
Right.
Yeah. All right, you could, you could design it so it comes out at right angles to the road.
Oh, we don't have to design it for them, but it's something we should.
Yeah, but the point being is. Yeah, but the point being is we should say it, but it's not, it's not a required modification for the area variance.
Yeah, it's an advisory comment.
Motion to support staff.
Thank you, Scott.
Who is that?
Second, McLaughlin.
Motion, Scott.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, any extensions?
Um, this is Watkins. Um, if they have to go for a site plan, they have to come in front of us, so I'm gonna recuse myself.
Okay.
Okay.
Mark.
Any objections? Okay, motion passes. Town holster.
There variants, I don't think Fred has the, Frank.
Frank, you gotta be. Okay.
You gotta get to that, you gotta share that screen, Rob.
What am I sharing right now? I'm sharing, ah, yes.
I have to recuse.
Was recusing?
McLaughlin.
Okay. All right, so this is no county impact. It's a six-foot fence for ten foot from the property line for an existing um, fuel supply company, no county impact on that.
Motion to prove staff comments, Baden.
Second, Conyer. Any uh, extensions? And Vince, you recused. All right, any objections? Woodstock. Any recusals?
All right, so peck and dresser, do I want to allow PP is a short-term rental in the R three district under property? They also looked at it from the back, the uh, getting a variance from perspective that they're a campground. In the definition of campground, it's two or more sites. This is one. You can't vary definition. They can't do that. And as we saw in the town Rochester, we uh made comments about uh transient uh, short-term rentals. We recommend that they not set this precedent that they not go down this road of allowing temporary structures to be used as uh short-term rentals. So we recommend uh disapprove on this one.
Black will move it.
Second, Conyer.
Robert, it's a use variance because it's, it's not allowed in the code?
Yes, and there's actually a, and I actually have a determination from the ZBA. Their, their interpretation also says no.
Okay.
Okay, we have motion, we have a second. Any extensions? Any opposition?
I oppose, Vivian.
Vivian, okay. Okay, motion passes. Thank you.
That's all, folks.
I believe that was the end of it. Let's do this again next month.
Second, Vivian.
Everybody.
Night, everybody.
Good night.
Motion to adjourn.
Everyone.
Good night, everyone. Before you, I log off, Rob, uh I got a few notes saying that I was I don't understand what's going on. Robbie, can you hear me? I said that I've got a few people who said my speaker being on was causing noise.
Yeah, well.
Do you hear anything? Do you hear anything about that?
Yeah, John, we do. So we'll, we'll take this offline, John. We'll give you a call tomorrow. How's that sound?
You have a lot of reverb.
Yeah, we'll call you tomorrow, John.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's fine.
Good night.
Good night, everybody.